This October 11th, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by Carl Sandberg Middle School Chorallets under the direction of Sarah Martin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music) (Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[732.11][732.11](Applause)
Thank you so much to the Carl Sandberg Chorallets. Is Principal Barker in the auditorium?
No.
Well, please extend our thanks to him. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 11th, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? A motion by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? And that motion is unanimous with Mrs. Schultz away from the table. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. Now I call on Mr. Tignor for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. It's National School Lunch Week from October 15th to 19th, 2018. National School Lunch Week is officially scheduled for October 15th to the 19th by an act of Congress, using the theme "School Lunch: Lots to Love." National School Lunch Week promotes excitement about the benefits of students consuming wholesome, healthy school lunches of fresh fruits and veggies, whole grains, and milk. The 2018 event was designed to help students and school nutrition professionals connect and share with parents, school officials, the media, and the public what each loves most about school lunches. The National School Lunch program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children and has been joined through the years by many, many other excellent child nutrition programs. There's a continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hopes of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. Disability Employment Awareness Month is October. Did you know that October is National Disability Employment and Awareness Month? This year's theme is "America's Workforce Empowering All." Each year, Fairfax County Public Schools participates in the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, NDEAM, which promotes career development for individuals with disabilities through hands-on career exploration and job shadowing in the following fields: administrative support, animal care, business management, communications, IT, and Parks and Recreation. NDEAM strives to encourage students to explore potential career or employment opportunities to learn more about business in their own community and begin to plan to achieve more successful employment outcomes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item 3.04, LGBT History Month. I call on Mr. McElveen for the recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. LGBTQ rights are something about which so many of us on this Board are passionate, and that passion has been reflected in our policymaking. Back in 2014 and 2015, this Board made great strides and led the Commonwealth in adding sexual orientation and gender identity to our nondiscrimination policy. What on paper may have seemed like a small action has had a profound impact on so many of our students who know that without question we love and respect each and every one of them for who they are. As I look back on all the work our Board has done over the past decade or so, we have done a great deal to make our school system a better and more welcoming place for all students. When you look at the various initiatives our Board has taken, we have slowly but systemically worked to dismantle the barriers by which LGBTQ students and staff are disproportionately affected. These include mental health staffing and suicide awareness efforts, our work on restorative justice and bullying prevention, dress code reform, and, most recently, sexual misconduct prevention. Of course, our work on these issues is not yet complete, but we will continue our work towards more perfect policies and regulations. There's perhaps no more fitting day than today, National Coming Out Day, to read this recognition of LGBT History Month, and on behalf of our School Board and school system, recognize all those students, employees, and members of our community who are members of the LGBTQ community, and reaffirm our strong belief that we love and respect each of you for who you are. The Fairfax County School Board, along with the National PTA, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and the Fairfax County Education Association, recognize October as LGBT History Month. According to National PTA, negative attitudes towards lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students puts them at an increased risk for violence and bullying. Negative attitudes also impact a student's ability to learn at school. LGBT History Month is recognized in October nationwide and in FCPS to acknowledge and celebrate that LGBT students, staff, and families are an integral component of our nation and of Fairfax County Public Schools. This special month was first recognized in 1994. October was chosen to commemorate National Coming Out Day on October 14th and the First March on Washington for Gay and Lesbian Rights on October 14th, 1979. One of the first gay-straight alliances in Virginia was founded at Hayfield High School in 2000, and now students are involved in clubs at many of the high schools in the county welcoming not only LGBT students, but their friends and those interested in creating safe schools. LGBT History Month in October is an opportunity for Fairfax County Public Schools' staff and students to celebrate and to learn more about these important constituents in our schools and neighborhoods. At this time, I would like to invite those in the audience who are here this evening in support of LGBT History Month to join me and my colleagues at the dais for a photo with the Board.
So Ms. Schultz had to leave this evening for a family emergency, and so I'm going to call on Ms. McLaughlin for National School Bus Safety a Week recognition.
The week of October 22nd to 26th has been designated as the National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme, quote, "My Driver, My Safety Hero," unquote, the week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student riders. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 142,000 students in over 1,600 school buses on more than 6,500 separate routes, traveling over 17 million operational miles each year. Motorists are encouraged to practice patience and drive gently around our school buses and in our neighborhoods and school communities. At this time, please join me in welcoming our amazing staff from Facilities and Transportation Department to the dais to take a photo with the Board, and again, our tremendous appreciation to Mr. Plattenberg and his incredible team that support our students each and every day.
I now call on Ms. Darrenak Kofax for a recognition of the Unified Champion Schools.
That's what I like, applause before, during, and after. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, it is my honor to recognize Lee High School, Robinson Secondary School, Frost Middle School, and Bush Hill Elementary School for being named, yes, go ahead, Unified Champion Schools by the Special Olympics International. 131 schools were selected nationwide in 2018, and out of the six schools chosen in Virginia, Bush Hill was the sole elementary school. Yes. Together, under the ideals of our strategic plan, these schools illustrate the caring culture focus of a welcoming and supportive culture. Unified Champion Schools are recognized for creating an environment that promotes acceptance and inclusion of individuals with intellectual disabilities by combining sports, education, and leadership to encourage collaboration between all students and staff. Through the 10 Standards of Excellence, these schools implement unified sports where students with and without disabilities compete as teammates, inclusive youth leadership that provides opportunities for all, and whole-school engagement that impacts the entire school climate and influences how students act both at school and outside of the school doors. With these efforts, FCPS can reduce bullying, fight stereotypes, and build relationships, all leading to a unified generation that chooses to include. Congratulations again to Lee, Robinson, Frost, and Bush Hill, and please join me in welcoming Deidre Lavery, Principal, and Peter Kelly, Assistant Principal of Lee High School, Matt Eline, Principal of Robinson Secondary School, Mary Duffy, Principal, and Suzanne Bond, Assistant Principal of Bush Hill Elementary, and Anthony Harris, Principal of Frost Middle School, to the dais for a photo with our Board. Congratulations.
Before we move on to item 3.07 on our agenda, I would like to go back to Mr. Tignor because he is going to recognize some special guests in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to recognize the Boy Scouts of PAC 688. They're out here from Fairfax Station and are here to work towards the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. Please stand and be recognized. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So now I call on Mrs. Hines for the Resolution on Climate Change Action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the resolution of the Fairfax County School Board calling for state and federal action on climate change. Whereas an overwhelming majority of credentialed scientists in the U.S. and abroad support the finding that climate change is happening and that human activity is a key contributor, and whereas if left unaddressed, the consequences of climate change will harm all Americans, most especially children and those living in poverty, and saddle future generations with the costly burden of a dangerously damaged planet, and whereas climate instability is a global challenge requiring bold, innovative, and sustained actions at all levels of government, local, state, and federal, and whereas the size of Fairfax County Public Schools' physical footprint provides an unparalleled opportunity to advance the use of renewable energy sources and reduce greenhouse gas output in Northern Virginia, and whereas pursuant to School Board Environmental Stewardship Policy 8542, FCPS leads the nation in energy efficiency, the development of green building design standards, and award-winning classroom opportunities for student advocacy and learning through the Get to Green program, and whereas the Fairfax County School Board's commitment to the safety, well-being, and future success of all children in our community also demands a high priority on reducing carbon consumption and our decisions regarding capital improvement, energy use, transportation, and other policy priorities within the Board's control, and whereas the Fairfax County School Board depends on committed partners in local, state, and federal government to realize our climate action goals, and recognizes the efforts and progress made to date, especially Fairfax County Government's recently announced request for proposals for solar installations on public buildings to include schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, one, calls on the members of the Virginia General Assembly and the United States Congress to act boldly on climate change and provide a regulatory framework that removes barriers to progress on climate action and encourages the rapid replacement of fossil fuels with renewable energy technology, and two, directs the superintendent to report timely to the Board changes in state and federal policy that support the goal of reducing carbon consumption, along with staff proposals to make best use of those opportunities in Facilities and Transportation Planning ISO move.
Is there a second? Mrs. Hines, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you very much, I would. And thank you, Madam Chair, for helping me to put this on the agenda tonight. Resolutions can seem like just words and not as meaningful as action, and it's true. It's not as meaningful as action. Action is also on the Board and superintendent's agenda. We will receive a report in November or December, I believe, from staff that will allow us to begin to make, to put carbon reduction projects in the next capital improvement program and to make other real progress here in the school system. So we are also people of action on this issue, and we will see that very soon. But our voices also matter. We should lend our influence on behalf of the children we serve. The recent report of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, and some of you may be aware of it, is absolutely alarming. Overwhelmingly, scientists across the globe tell us that we have a very narrow window to save a livable climate for ourselves, my generation, and certainly the next generations that we serve. We have to do more, and we have to do it faster. That is the message. We cannot take our eyes off this issue. So this resolution, I hope, will send our message, will reflect our voice to the community and to those who also serve this community. It is based on research of many similar calls to action by local entities across the country, and I want to thank the Citizens Climate Lobby for their work collecting that research and for their advocacy nationwide to make bold change and innovation happen. I want to also thank the students, teachers, and parents and community members who have contacted us in support of this and other work on the climate of the school system and the Board. And this resolution is not just words, we do have some follow-ups, and those include the timely reports that we will receive from the superintendent with plans for further work. So we will respond when our state and federal representatives make these important changes. We will respond and make the best use of them that we can. We also will follow up in our legislative program discussion. We do that in November timeframe, November or December, and we will make sure that in our legislative program, through which we advocate at the state and federal level, that we are much more specific and much bolder in our language and our demands of our representatives at those levels. We know that neither Virginia nor the United States government is leading on this issue, and we need leaders. We need leaders so that we can do what we want to do here at the local level, and our children need leaders everywhere. And also, I believe that the Chair of our Board has spoken with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors of the county, and we are in the process of putting together some joint coordinated work, and some of that will be a public summit of some sort, and my hope is that part of that conversation will lead to climate reduction goals of certain percentages of carbon output by certain dates. So I hope that we have much more work to come after this, but I think it's very important. I really appreciate the opportunity, and I hope that my fellow Board members will support this opportunity as we head into the legislative season in the General Assembly, and we're starting to talk to our representatives, that we have a very bold and clear statement about what we need and what we expect on behalf of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your second?
I would love to, thank you. First of all, I want to echo Ms. Hines and thank her for her leadership in this and her collaboration and working with everyone of us on the Board. Sometimes as part-time members, it feels rushed, but definitely it felt that we all had a chance to have input and to make amendments to the resolution. So I'm very happy with what we have here today, as well as what is to come. I also want to thank members of my constituencies, including Citizens Climate Lobby, Sierra Club, professionals working in the field of sustainability, as well as today, meeting with a physician who's very concerned about some of the effects he's seeing in our community. The thing about science is that you can ignore it, but it still exists. Fairfax County Public Schools have nearly 200,000 students enrolled and direct and maintain nearly 200 schools and centers in their associated real estate. We operate over 1,600 buses and vehicles, employ nearly 25,000 employees. The School Board asks for this resolution on behalf of all of our students, thank you those of you who are here today, and employees, and in the name of those in the future who will depend on the school system to set an example and establish responsibility for the thoughtful and careful use of all of our resources. Without action, our student body will be adversely affected by damage to our infrastructure and physical assets, higher operating costs, and adverse impact to student health and more. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has determined that stabilizing the climate will require immediate and significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, and that the continued release of the gases into the atmosphere from human activity threatens stability of our Earth's climate. The physical consequences of climate change are already evident in Virginia, including rising sea levels, increased storm intensity and flooding, we have seen recently, and periods of drought and species migration. Our students and the future of our county depend on us to take leadership and bolder actions. Virginia and Fairfax County can lead by example. The size of FCPS' physical footprint provides an unparalleled opportunity to advance the use of renewable energy sources and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Virginia. We can make some of those changes ourselves and have, with the help of our staff, begun with our programs, some award-winning programs through our schools, our education, and our facilities. However, more needs to be done to move the needle, which will also require a regulatory framework that removes legal and policy barriers to take the necessary climate action and incentivizes the rapid replacement of fossil fuels with clean energy and clean transportation technologies. With this resolution, we must step up our advocacy at the state and the federal levels, and as Ms. Hines mentioned, move forward in our collaborative work with our partners on the county, and we, and I look forward to having these conversations and bringing the community together. So with that being said, I am very happy to second this resolution, and I hope that the members of our Board will vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Mr. Tignor, I see that you would like to contribute here?
Thank you very much, yeah. As the United States, we're the second-largest carbon dioxide emitter in the entire world. And on a national level, UN recently released a report displaying that if we want to keep the environmental net change beneath 3 degrees Fahrenheit, we need to be cutting our emissions by 1 billion tons of CO2 per year, and that has to be done started within the next 10 years. And 3 degrees Fahrenheit, it may not sound like much, but to put that into perspective, the Ice Age 15,000 years ago, that was 9 degrees below what we are right now. That was an Ice Age. So 3 degrees, even though it's a third of that, that's already more extreme than we'd ever want to be. So I plead the Board that you guys support this resolution, and really, we need to push for this kind of change in our county and sort of set an example as well for other people to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Tignor. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchek, for bringing this resolution forward. This is, these are very important issues that we dedicate ourselves to, and I want to thank our students. And I'm very proud of our young people in Fairfax County Public Schools. We don't have to convince you what we need to do. You're out there convincing the community. Because it is your world, it is your home, it is your Earth, and you are the ones who are carrying the ball, and it makes a huge difference. We are listening. I'm very proud of our curriculum for years in Fairfax County, where we have had a full set of studies and activities in climate science, in environmental science, the trips that maybe some of you made in middle school to Chesapeake Bay. We have looked out for Mother Earth, but we've got to look out a whole lot harder than we ever have before. The other interesting piece is that many years ago, our own facilities, people began to calculate our carbon footprint. And when people would come and say, "Why can't you just tear down that school and build a new one?" We had a formula, I think it was Kevin Snead who did it, and figured out what, sort of the carbon cost of just tearing everything down and starting all over again. You need to reuse what you've already made. You need to reuse those bricks. And I'm proud of the fact that we, so many years ago, figured that out. And when we would go to the community and share this, people were a little taken aback. I don't think they'd thought about that before. So we've been on this train a long time, but I think as you students who are now in charge, so go hard. I believe we already have some bills before the General Assembly that have already been filed. Virginia has a ways to go, because in order to actually make alternative fuels and some of these adventures more possible as a business model, more needs to be done, as I understand it, in being able to sell back to the grid any electricity. So we have work to do. Thank you very much, students. Keep pushing us hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin.
I want to absolutely express my support for this resolution and my gratitude to my two colleagues who've brought forward this remarkable resolution. As my colleagues know, I was born and raised in Northern California, and my childhood was deeply shaped by the importance of being mindful of our environment. It was very common that we already had solar panels on roofs to heat our Doughboy Pools, if anybody knows what a Doughboy Pool was back in the day, garden composting, recycling, reusable canvas grocery bags. This was my childhood back in the 70s. Fast forward, here we are, the 21st century, and yes, we are still trying to get people to use reusable grocery bags, but the presence of those plastic bags are still very prevalent here in Fairfax and around the country. Very few jurisdictions around the world have finally banned them altogether, and we know they are a horrible pollution to our country. But we have an opportunity, as the 10th-largest school system, to lend this voice, and I hope that school boards around the country will become aware of the voice that we can bring to this, and bring it to our state, its general assemblies, bring it to our Congress, and say that we cannot ignore what the most recent UN climate report has said. I was actually visiting my native Santa Rosa, the town where I grew up in, to see my mom. She lost her home in the wildfires. What is happening in this country with our climate change is real, and what that report says is we are very close to not being able to reverse what's happening. And if it hasn't shaken people to their core, especially those of us who are looking at the younger generation, my three sons, and what kind of world we're looking at, we cannot continue to ignore where we're at. And so I just really hope that this resolution will bring not just some inspiration, but it will be an important statement about where this Board is, and as Ms. Hines captured so well, we're so appreciative to Mr. Plattenberg, to our superintendent and his team. This is something with Get to Green that FCPS has cared about, and it's something that we can be proud of as Fairfax County residents, but I hope that we will continue to push the needle further and that we really are going to be able to save this planet.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. McElveen, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it seems like every few months, a new study comes out with the same conclusion, that we're in big trouble when it comes to the issue of climate change. However, the study that was released this week by the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change was different. It was the culmination of 91 scientists examining the research findings from over 6,000 journal articles. Their conclusion, we're in even bigger trouble than originally expected. The world in 2040, in 22 years, when some of our students reach my age, and when some of our mid-career employees reach Mr. Moon's age, that world... Sorry. Sorry.
That's another thing that never changes.
That world, that world in 22 years sounds like an amalgamation of the chapters from Dante's Inferno. Inundated coastlines, intensifying droughts, widespread poverty, food shortages, wildfires, and a mass die-off of coral reefs. But the ultimate goal of the IPCC study was not to paint this bleak picture, but rather to say that there is still time for governments around the world to act before this becomes a reality. This resolution before us tonight is more important than ever. The current administration is simultaneously pulling back from the Paris Agreement and ramping up coal burning. Where our country pulls back, we must push forward at the state and local levels, and that includes... that includes school boards. Which brings me to the question that many may pose: Why does this matter for school systems? Well, first of all, the Dante's Inferno that I described is well within the lifetime of our students and many of our communities' adults. We can no longer push off action to the next generation, because in school systems, we are the next generation. Second, school systems, and Fairfax County schools in particular, have a huge building footprint when it comes to infrastructure. Our square footage, as many have heard, is greater than the size of four Pentagons. And we see how important school infrastructure is in communities that have been affected by increasingly strong natural disasters. Five weeks after Hurricane Florence, kids are still out of school in North Carolina. More than a year after Hurricane Maria, students were still out of school in Puerto Rico. And many with means fled their homes to other places in the United States where they could, in fact, access schooling. Third, there will be fiscal impacts of climate change. The 2.7 degrees of warming that are projected by 2040 will cost the world $54 trillion. The United States could lose roughly 1.2% of GDP for every 1.8 degrees of warming. That will affect all of us, not just businesses, but also the budgets of governments and in turn, school systems. I am so proud of our community advocates and students who have stood up in groups like Solar on our schools and been persistent in their advocacy on behalf of their peers. Finally, as state legislative liaison, I want to commit on behalf of this board that we will continue working with advocates and work to amplify your voices by including these issues as part of our state and federal legislative program, which we will adopt next month. And finally, I do want to thank Pat and Dahlia for bringing forward this resolution, and I am proud to support you in this endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Evans?
Thank you very much, and I too want to thank Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchak for bringing this forward. This is one of the most critical issues of our time. In fact, it sometimes seems like such a huge issue that it's hard to even tackle it. But tackle it we must for the future of our children, our children's children. We have to heed the very dire warnings that we see now every day from our scientists, but also from Mother Nature. It is very clear, we cannot ignore this any longer. FCPS, we have our part to play in this too, and we will play our part in it. At the same time, we need to call on our partners at the state level, at the federal level, at the international level to work with us. We need to work together for the future generations. And I will agree with Mrs. Strauss that the young people, and also with others who have said this, that young people have seen this, they're willing to tackle this, so we need to do our part. Thank you.
So I'd like to take the chair's privilege to provide a couple of comments on my own. Thank you to both Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchak for bringing this resolution to the board. I know that many will say that this resolution is beyond the scope of this board's work. However, I think it is important for us to address these issues that have an impact on the health and well-being of our students. Climate change does have an impact on our students. Virginia's climate has warmed about 1 degree Fahrenheit over the past century, and sea levels have risen 1 to 2 inches every decade over the same period of time. We have an increase in coastal flooding along the waterfront in my own magisterial district. Carbon dioxide levels have increased by 40% since the House of Burgess's was formed in the state of Virginia. Increases in water temperatures are impacting our ecosystems, and increased air temperatures have an impact on student health, conditions such as allergies, asthma, heart, and lung diseases. According to the state climatologist, we also are seeing an increase in mosquito and tick-borne infections with the higher temperatures. All of us need to work together at the federal, state, and local level to address this important issue and reduce our carbon footprint. When I first spoke with Ms. Hines about this resolution, I suggested that we might want to work together with the Board of Supervisors on this important issue. After all, the school board maintains more building space than the whole county. And I was glad to see that subsequently Chairman Bolova made a similar suggestion of having the two boards work together to develop a coordinated approach to our local activities. So I will plan on reaching out to her in the coming days to make sure we get this on our joint board calendars. And with that, I'd like to take the vote. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. And that vote is unanimous with Mrs. Schultz away. So now, Section 4.01 of our agenda is citizen participation. Tonight, seven citizens have signed up to address the board, and we also have one video testimony. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Ms. Amanda Campbell will be our first speaker, followed by Diane Cooper-Gould and Agnes Mallard.
Hi. My name is Amanda Campbell. Hi, my name is Amanda Campbell. During his keynote speech at the Leadership Conference, Dr. Brabran posed a series of questions for leaders to think about. One of the questions was, are we spending our resources where they need to be spent so that we can meet the needs of every child? As an FCPS parent since 2015, my answer to that would be no. From the moment Sarah entered FCPS as a non-verbal three-year-old, we ran into a lot of gatekeeping with regard to resources. When her initial speech-language consult came back, it recommended one hour of speech a month. She was not introduced to a high-tech ATS device until over a year later. She didn't have the screen you saw me use just now with hundreds of words on it until January of 2018. That's over five years of her life without access to a robust vocabulary, much less seeing it be modeled appropriately. As you saw with my use of the device, using AAC is akin to learning a foreign language. The words may be the same, but learning how to find them and put them together is an entirely different challenge. To put this in perspective, quote, "By 18 months, babies have heard 4,380 hours of spoken language, and we don't expect them to be fluent speakers yet. If AAC users only see symbols modeled for communication twice weekly for 20 to 30 minutes, which is the amount of service my daughter currently receives, it will take 84 years for them to have the same exposure to aided language as an 18-month-old has to spoken language. FCPS needs to seriously reconsider its staffing models for SLPs and assistive technology in order to meet the needs of students with significant speech delays and disorders." As FCPS looks at the cost per pupil per year, I would ask that you not just look at the cost per year, but the cost over the course of a child's pre-K to 12 experience. Neuroplasticity is most constant and rapid during the first five years of a child's life. What would happen if we opened up our resources as much as possible in the preschool and early elementary years? What if Sarah had access to a high-tech ATS device and an IA to focus on modeling for her with speech services 20 to 30 minutes a day for at least three, for the last three years? How would her need for services now be different? Would it be less? Most likely. What if FCPS took advantage of those critical years for neuroplasticity rather than acted as gatekeepers? Would they spend less, the same, or more in the long run? I would love to see FCPS collect and share data on this. Dr. Brabran ended his keynote speech talking about joy, love, and trust. Resource stewardship requires honesty and transparency. In the past, I've had an FCPS administrator tell me a certain service was not possible, a service which I had as a substitute been paid by FCPS to provide, so I knew it was possible. Trust is damaged when those who are supposed to be your equal partner in your child's education are not truthful with you about what services are available. I was lucky to have the background that I did so that I knew it was available, but many parents are not so lucky. FCPS needs to make it much more clear what services are available in the county so that parents can be truly equal partners in our children's education. Thank you.
Tonight, I want to talk about the return on investment aspect of resource stewardship as defined in the strategic plan. While I've had more than one FCPS staff member ask me personally why additional investment should be made into special education programs as the outcomes are not good regardless of investment, I have yet to have a single staff member be able to tell me how special education program efficacy is being tracked and evaluated in a data-driven manner in Fairfax County. How is the school board being responsible stewards of FCPS resources when it does not insist on meaningful evaluation of programs that they have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars developing and piloting throughout the county? For example, programs like Unstuck and On Target that address executive functioning and Just Words for Dyslexia. Make no mistake, these are excellent programs. These are programs that are proven to improve outcomes for students when administered with fidelity, but that's not what's happening. Programs must be implemented with fidelity, otherwise they're not scientifically proven to have successful outcomes. Yet despite having amazing resources available through the Department of Special Services, the administrative structure of Fairfax County Public Schools prevents DSS from having the power to insist that any staff member, including special education staff, be trained in the implementation of specific remediation programs. There is literally no requirement that a single teacher in any school be trained to administer specific programs with fidelity. Training and school-based availability are optional. Practically, this means that while we know that 15% to 20% of our population is affected by dyslexia, there's no guarantee that any teacher on staff in a given school will have the training to administer our approved dyslexia programs to students in need. In order for a principal to know if anyone on his staff is trained to administer a dyslexia program, he must contact central office, request a report on his staff, and await results. This is time-consuming and laborious, and tracking these qualifications is not mandated. How can anyone measure efficacy if programs are not being implemented with fidelity? Metrics of success are not being explicitly defined, and data is not being collected on the implementation and outcomes of said programs as tracked on a county-wide scale? The notion that outcomes are bad for differently-abled students without having meaningful implementation and tracking of evidence-based programs administered with fidelity is nothing short of discriminatory. It's a cultural holdover of values that values typical development over neural and physical diversity. I challenge you to presume competence, tear down administrative structural barriers to giving evidence-based programs to our students, and redefine what success looks like in a more inclusive way. You must track the short and long-term outcomes... Oh, thank you, sorry. It didn't beep. ...through clearly-defined metrics and data. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Brabran. I appreciate the chance to speak to you tonight, as you recognize LGBT history, Hispanic heritage, disability employment awareness, National School Lunch Week, and National School Bus Safety Week. Thank you for your dedication to our children and your commitment to students and staff in Fairfax County. I want to speak to the FCPS strategic goal number four tonight, resource stewardship in terms of what I deeply believe to be your most precious resource, the people who work and support our children. I wasn't able to attend the Pathways to Leadership Conference this Monday, but I've learned that I missed a key distinction drawn by Dr. Brabran, and I apologize if this third-hand understanding is not accurate, but what I hear is that we now prefer to view the class of non-instructional staff as operational rather than the educational support partners that we have long considered ourselves to be. As an FEA member, I proudly wear Red for Ed on Wednesdays. A favorite shirt proclaims that we can't spell "respect" without ESP, the Educational Support Professionals, your children are cared for, and yes, by whom their instruction is supported. We are the school-based and central office staff, safety and security, facilities management, transportation, skilled trades, human resources, financial services, food services, and classroom instructional support staff, the IAs, PHTAs, and PHAs who together make FCPS instruction for our children possible. In 2003, my principal loved to tell us that his IAs gave him the most bang for the buck. Well, that's a pretty hollow boast when you understand that an IA 15 years ago did not approach, and one who is hired today is far below a living wage for Fairfax County. Few IAs can afford to live without additional jobs or the support of a spouse, and it is a travesty, I think, that an entry-level IA does not make enough to live in Fairfax County. An entry-level step is listed now as $22,380. That's 36% below the Fairfax County cost of living, and I ask you to consider making it possible for those folks to live here and serve your children.
We have Tina Williams, followed by Emma Layton and Sophie Dupre-Goulin.
Good evening, school board, Superintendent Brabran, leadership team, and the community. I'm Tina Williams, a school counselor and president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Union, Local 2401. I thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my members tonight. We appreciate your directive for Dr. Brabran to work with the teacher unions on developing a permanent solution to mitigate the lost potential earnings for teachers on the top of the BA lanes. This action initiated four meetings with Marty Smith and leadership, including the voices of stakeholders to resolve this issue, shows regard and consideration for this group of employees. We believe this is the start of this process. This is an opportunity to do no harm and to do the right thing for all on the BA lanes. We continue to hear from members and share their concerns. How the BA lanes matter is handled will speak loudly and clearly to your employees, the community, on your values. Fairfax County educators, this community, students, and families are watching. I am hopeful and ready to continue this collaborative partnership with the new leadership staff. There are many opportunities to restructure and redesign the ineffective processes, policies, and regulations meant to protect our members, and FCFT wants to assist. I look forward to addressing concerns with fairness and justice as a means to make our schools their very best, and FCPS employment highly sought after. Imagine the impossible: 100% funding of FCPS schools and programs, mastery of skills as priority, healthy and safe school buildings with healthy food, transparency and equity for all, desirable classes... for all, desirable class sizes, early education and career technical education programs, enough instructional and mental health support staff, respectful wages and benefits for all professional educators, and our professional educators regarded as absolute professionals. Now is the time for brave and necessary changes in the FCPS culture. FCFT looks forward to continued work with the school board, the superintendent, leadership team, other unions, and all of our members to address all opportunities to improve equity for all students and employees. This work takes each of us coming together to positively shift this culture in a way this county has never experienced before. I stand with members of all the unions in asking for continued thoughtful decisions that uphold their dedication and professionalism. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma Layton, and I'm currently a senior at Woodson High School. I'm here today representing a student-led group called Solar on the Schools, which endeavors to incorporate solar into the current FCPS energy system. Today, I'm here to speak to you in favor of the resolution on climate change. As we have seen over the past couple of years, climate change is becoming an increasingly significant actor in our politics, our energy, and our well-being. According to a recent press release by the IPCC, reducing global warming by 1.5 degrees Celsius will require rapid, far-reaching, and unprecedented changes in all aspects of society. But there are changes we have to make for the sake of our ecosystems, our natural resources, and our safety. As our solar technology gets better and cheaper, we have the power to take a huge step towards a greener, cleaner future. With an influential county like Fairfax leading the charge, we will positively influence the rest of Virginia to follow suit. So I'd like to thank you all for considering an issue that's so important to your constituents, and I'd like to emphasize the significant impact, the positive impact, this vote will have on the future of energy. As somebody inheriting the world that you strive to make better, it means a lot to see things like climate change, things that will directly affect me and my peers for the rest of our lives, talked about in government. Today, by being here, we show that we want change, but today, by voting green, you make that change a reality. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your vote. Have a great evening. Also, Sophie had a lot of homework, so she couldn't make it.
Please give Sophie our best regards, and Ms. Walton.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Chair, and School Board members, and Dr. Braybrand and leadership team. I'm really excited tonight. I wanted to take the opportunity, since you were recognizing the Unified Special Olympics Schools, I wanted to take an opportunity to brag about Robinson for the next three minutes. Because one thing that's going on at Robinson, the Special Olympics, is only one little piece, and so I just wanted to -- I know, Dr. Braybrand, early on, you said that you really wanted to hear about programs that were working well so that we could replicate them all over the county. So this is a program that is working well, and it's already been created by the teachers, so it's ready to roll. And actually, the teachers have actually been working with other schools like Frost, Woodson, and like Lake Braddock to start the replication effort on your behalf. But basically, what has happened at Robinson over the past several years is that they have created a partnership class. So they have 60 students. Some are peer mentors who have to apply to be in this class. It's an elective, and then they are partnered with and they work with the students that have intellectual disabilities. It's a really hard class to get into, and it starts in 10th grade. And then what we're finding, or what they're finding, my colleague over here, Jennifer that I've been working with, has told me about it. Basically, what they're finding is that the students in 10th grade, they want to continue doing it in 11th grade and in 12th grade. And then what they're also accomplishing over there is to solve the issue of this special ed teacher shortage that we're seeing. Because a lot of the students that are in this partnership class are going on to become special ed educators. And then that is only another piece, because what they have also is after-school, the partnership club. They are doing so many activities after-school with these kids. They do karaoke, they have dances, they have evening activities as well. It's just amazing. The schedule is really, really filled for the children, and they're making a lot of efforts and really inclusive environment. One great story was that they had the winter dance this past year at the school, and they nominated a snow queen and a snow king, and the student who was the winner of the snow queen was one of the students from the partners' class. So that was really exciting. And when her mom was sharing about this, they were saying, "Oh, you mean at the special ed dance, right?" No, this was like the school dance. It wasn't just the special ed dance. So that was, to me, a really powerful example of the work and the success that they're having. But they are also doing this literally out of the goodness of their hearts. And so what really needs to be happening is some adequate funding to support these teachers and all of their efforts with these amazing, amazing classes and activities and cooking clubs, and just a lot is going on. In fact, one thing that they're doing to raise funds for this class is this Saturday, if you're available, they're going to be having a unified run at Robinson at 8:00 AM, so come on over for a 5K, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. And we now have a video testimony.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I am the president of FCPS Pride, which is an organization for LGBTQ employees, parents of LGBTQ students, and LGBTQ family members. I want to thank you for recognizing LGBTQ History Month tonight. It means a great deal to me personally and to members of my community. This recognition underscores how much the school system has changed since I first spoke to this board 18 years ago, when these whiskers were red. But it is not all sweetness and light, or some would say rainbows and unicorns. Each month brings further news that shows that we no longer have friends and allies in the federal government, not even on the Supreme Court. Let me speak as someone with a great deal of privilege in this world. The Trump administration and the Kavanaugh court are not likely to take anything away from me personally. I myself am safe, but for many people in this country, these are dangerous times. You must be the bulwark to protect not only LGBTQ students, but African-American students, Latinx students, Muslim students, female students, Jewish students, students of Asian descent, or students from other backgrounds, students who are immigrants, students with disabilities, and students of minority religions. You are on the front lines now in continuing to uphold the equity that Fairfax values. Be brave and be strong. We will support you, as will the voters of Fairfax County. Thank you for listening.
I now call on Mr. Tigner for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Me and the other student representatives for the Assistant Advisory Committees met last week, and we discussed some methods that you could do personally as a student or pass on to your children to improve their mental health. One of these is, of course, my favorite, naps. Those are always great. Take advantage of study hall or downtime at school. Get some of that homework out of the way so you have more free time later on. Exercise. Get out there, do something for yourself at a point every time of the day. Stay physically fit as well as mentally fit. You can perhaps drink some tea or coffee if that helps you get that extra kick to get that homework done. And there's a great thing that's been passed around our school is a mindfulness minute at the beginning of classes. This was actually started or introduced to us by one of our English teachers, and if you're a student, you can pass this on to your teachers, see if they like it as well. It's just a minute beginning of every class where you sit down, and they dim the lights, and you just take a minute to de-stress and sort of calm down before beginning the lesson. And it sort of helps you relate to the teacher as well, so you start that lesson off with a better mindset or approach to learning. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the ADHD College Success Lecture, and this is a personal issue for me as well. I have ADHD, and I was diagnosed in, I believe, 8th grade. And I've had my own personal struggles with it, but sometimes the best ways to sort of improve yourself is just to reach out, look online, find different methods. And I found methods for myself, and I applied them, and it really helped me in sort of my path through secondary education and through this conference. Hopefully, I can be exposed to better ideas, pass them on to you guys, and hopefully help them to spread some other ideas as well. We talked about climate change tonight as well, a little bit, but I really encourage, I think Get to Green was mentioned. I really encourage you to go and check it out. Search Get to Green for FCPS online and see what your school does and what their footprint is on the environment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the Strategic Plan Goal Four Resource Stewardship Report.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. It's a pleasure to have Marty Smith, our Chief Operating Officer, and our Assistant Superintendent Lee Burden. And I think, is Alice here tonight? Is Alice here with us tonight? No, who are going to do that presentation? So, Lee, hey, there you are. So you want to come on up, and we'll get started.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Braybrand. I'm here to review our accomplishments for Goal Four Resource Stewardship. Remember that we will have a more detailed discussion on Monday at the work session that I believe starts at 5:30. As outlined in the strategic plan, Goal Four Resource Stewardship, FCPS commits to championing the needs of our school communities and to be responsible stewards of the public's investment. It's important to mention that this report looks back at Fiscal 18 and at the overarching strategies 10 and 11, which involve maximizing and aligning FCPS resources and promoting our value to the community by providing better information to increase understanding. We've been successful in resource stewardship, evidenced by the examples noted on the one-pager that was part of your packet. Air cost per pupil compared to WABE participants, which is the left-hand chart in the middle of the page, is very favorable. The average is $14,827. Air cost per pupil is $14,767. The original goal was to be within $1,000 of the average, and we were within $60 of the average, so I'd say that we met our goal. Air cost per pupil again ranks in the middle of the WABE participants, and I think it's important to note that all of the WABE participants adhere to the same cost-per-pupil formula. And while it's true that we do enjoy some economies of scale because of our size, the smaller divisions don't have those economies of scale, it should be noted that it may not be that simple. Salaries and class sizes have the greatest impact on cost per pupil. Prince William has the highest class sizes, according to the WABE guide, which is self-reported by them, and you can see that their cost per pupil is the lowest. They reported that their middle school class size is 28.1 to 1 compared to our 25.1, and their high school goes up to 29.3 compared to our 25.9. So having those larger class sizes means less teachers, and that's going to push their cost per pupil down. Salaries also play an important part in the cost per pupil, mostly because K-12 education is so labor-intensive. Arlington and Alexandria pay the most, and they have the highest cost per pupil. So that's not surprising. The division that's closest in size to us is Montgomery County, and they have similar demographics. Their cost per pupil is about 8.5% higher than ours. They spend almost $1,300 more per student than we do, and we would need about $250 million more dollars in air budget to spend the same amount that Montgomery County does. Their salary, career earnings for a master's degree are comparable to Fairfax, but their class sizes are a little bit smaller, which may account for their increased cost per pupil compared to Fairfax County Public Schools. But I believe firmly that the cost per pupil is the right metric and absolutely documents our efficiency. Successful resource stewardship is also shown by protection of the classroom, and that's evidenced by the 2002 additional school-based staff added since 2009, coupled with the reduction in non-school-based staff of 174 since 2009. And that's the chart in the middle of the page on the right. And more recently, from '18 to '19, we added about 200 school-based positions and just five non-school-based positions. And that five non-school-based is actually a net, because recall that we added a number of positions for OSS and Equity Office as part of a realignment and reorganization so that the net was five additional positions in non-school-based. It's important to note that as enrollment grows, not only does the need for teachers, but also the work of operational support or non-school-based, it's just not as directly. So continued reductions to operational support or non-school-based positions may not be sustainable in the future. Over the last 10 years, reductions or minimal increases have occurred in non-school-based positions despite greater demands for information, data, and analysis. Again, this one-pager just provides the cost per pupil and the school-based and non-school-based position increases and decreases compared to enrollment, as an example. Some other indicators of success of resource stewardship will be gone over in more detail on Monday, but just to name a few, enrollment is one of our metrics, and with the exception of Fiscal 16, we have an absolute projection variance of less than 1%, and most years, that variance is .2 or .3. Compared to WABE participants and their ability to project enrollment, we have a much better track record. Those divisions' variances range from .6 to 1.5. And I think it's important to acknowledge that individual schools are much more difficult to project enrollment than doing it in the aggregate. But the best metric that we have is how we are doing, looking at it overall. We met our goals in revenue projections. We met our goals in expenditure projections. We had a successful CIP. The number of temporary classrooms went from 990 to 798, which is a 19% reduction, which increased the number of seats, 6,895. And as you all know, we got an additional $25 million from the county for our capital improvement program. We received stakeholder feedback on the IGNITE plan from focus groups, and we conducted surveys with employees about the content and design. Our IT metrics have also improved in the areas of network service availability, call abandonment, and resolution rates. And finally, we're promoting FCPS's value to the community by providing increased and better information to increase understanding. And a couple of examples of that are our partnerships. We have 36 new completed partnerships to date, and we also provide increased information, and an example of that is the disaggregated cost per pupil. If you look at the bottom of your one-pager, we're moving forward on the return on investment and strategic decision-making cycle, and it should be noted that analyzing programs takes a significant amount of time and resources that requires the assistance of every department and every school. Last year's Goal Four reporting described the strategic decision-making cycle for resource allocation, so I won't go over that in any detail. You know that the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement created this framework for FCPS, and it relies on a plan-do-study-act cycle. I will say that it focuses on a series of systematic steps for deciding how and where to allocate funds and other resources. And although this figure looks like a static process, it's actually quite dynamic. It's a living cycle, and programs or initiatives will be in different stages, on different levels, for different things at different times. So don't be fooled by how it looks on the page. It's definitely a living thing. Looking at the second figure shown about the pathway to implementation of a decision-making, over the last year, we began initial implementation of the SDMC framework. Most of the work was focused on prioritizing our strategic work, which included collaboration Most of the work was focused on prioritizing our strategic work, which included collaboration with the LT and the school board to determine the strategic focus for the next couple of years. Additionally, the leadership team piloted efforts to tie budgeting within the SDMC cycles and developed recommendations for enhanced metrics for the school board that could be used within those cycles. Moving forward this year, we will begin to implement full SDMC cycles. Action plans for each strategic focus area will detail our activities and associated costs in support of desired outcomes, so that at the act phase of the cycle, there's evidence for which actions should be continued or which should be modified or ended. And by monitoring the relationship between the results or the impacts of our activities in support of strategic plan in funding and resources, and then taking actions based on that data, we'll be able to improve the alignment of resource allocation and budgeting towards the aims specified in the strategic plan. And we can talk about this in far greater detail on Monday, again, October 15. The report will be discussed, and a PowerPoint has, has been provided. And I guess we'll see you then.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. And we do look forward to having a fuller discussion about this report on Monday. That will be Monday, October 15.
15, that's correct.
And the work session starts at 11:00 AM on Monday. Item 5.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make a motion to confirm the recommended action. I now call on Mrs. Evans for a motion.
Thank you. I move to grant, in part, the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with and convicted of a serious criminal offense related to a community-based incident, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? That's Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Dar, I'm sorry, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Strauss. All those opposed? Ms. Darrenak-Kofax. Those abstaining? Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz away from the table. That motion carries. I now call on Ms. Evans for a motion regarding local graduation requirements for Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma. This item was removed from the consent agenda at the request of Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I move that the school board approve changing the local FCPS graduation requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma to match the VDOE requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma as recommended by a steering committee with representation from the school and central office leadership.
Second? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would, just briefly. We had a work session on this issue, and the reason I asked for it to be pulled off the consent agenda is because I did think that we needed to discuss it at the board table. I'm supporting the change. And I believe the information that we got after we went to the students at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, that they also supported these changes. That was one thing that the Board requested that the superintendent and staff do, to get in touch with the, the students and get their position on this as well. I did have a couple of questions. One that was raised at, well, first of all, I guess I would, I would ask Dr. Braybrand if you or staff would just, for the public, summarize what we're doing here and why. Because I do think that it's important for the, the public to understand that what we are doing is, we, we are changing the requirements, you know, but it, it will now be in line with VDOE. It won't be beyond VDOE. If you wanted to give us a little bit more detail about that.
All right, I'll do a short summary, and then I'm going to let Dr. Presidio share some additional points. But the bottom line is, the Virginia Department of Education is giving us additional flexibility when it comes to the standard diploma. And we're utilizing that flexibility so that students can, who are pursuing the standard diploma, have an opportunity to pursue additional coursework that aligns with their passion and interest. And we think that's really going to be an opportunity for many students to really get the college and career-ready preparation that they need. And let me let Dr. Presidio see if there's anything else that you would like to add to that.
Yes, I wouldn't add too much, just a few points. First of all, this was an item in the School Division's strategic plan that really came out of community conversations when the strategic plan was being developed, was this idea that we wanted to create more flexibility and more personalization in students' high school course-taking experiences. So as Dr. Braybrand said, these changes would align the FCPS requirements, graduation requirements for a standard diploma with the state graduation requirements for a standard diploma in the areas of science and social studies. So in the area of science, FCPS currently requires three credits in three different science disciplines, so biology, physics, chemistry, for example. The state requires three credits in two disciplines. So this would create a little bit more flexibility. And then the other item under the Board's consideration right now is in social studies, where FCPS requires four credits and the state requires three credits. So this would create a little bit additional course-taking flexibility in the area of social studies as well. And I think the most important point probably to remember is that this is just for the standard diploma. So students pursuing the standard diploma, and about a third of our students pursue the standard diploma, and about 2/3 of our students pursue an advanced studies diploma. And this does not change any of the requirements for an advanced studies diploma.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you going through that. And flexibility is, I think, increasingly important, so the fact that this doesn't preclude anyone from taking more, they can take more if they choose to. One question that came up at our work session was, I believe the Board was coming around to the idea that rather than it only being prospective for students who are starting their, starting now with planning out their high school career, that it also be available to, to all students that can benefit from it? And I just wanted to, to confirm with you that in fact that is the case, Dr. Presidio?
That is the case. So current students that have not yet fulfilled those requirements, the, the course-taking flexibility would take effect essentially next year for any of our current students.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that for the Board. And, and finally, what I would, I have to admit, I'm disappointed with the answer that we got on Avid. It was an answer that I, I expected because I had received it before. But the, the question I have on that is, with the definition of what is a CTE course, I had asked the question for, could we consider Avid, which is an excellent, an excellent course to take, and it helps many of our students prepare for college, prepare for work? If that could be, again, in, in light of wanting to have more flexibility, if it could be considered either a CTE, a career in technical education requirement, or if it could be considered a practical and fine arts requirement? And I, the, the short answer seems to be no. But my, my question is, is, is that because of, do we have, is that because we don't think we should, or are we reading state requirements that, that we cannot?
I, I think the answer that we provided as a follow-up to the work session was primarily focused on the definition of the state requirements and our interpretation of the state requirements, which we do not believe would allow for Avid to substitute as a finer practical art or CTE course. That does not, however, preclude us from advocating with the state and the State Board of Education to see if we could get additional flexibility there for the future.
Well, thank you. And I, that's where I was heading with this. If it, if it is a matter of the interpretation with the State Board, then I would ask our Board to consider advocating either with the General Assembly or with the Board of Education, or both, to open up that, that possibility. And if my colleagues agree, I would, I would ask that we include that as part of our legislative package. So with that, I'll simply say that I do fully support this change and hope that my colleagues do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
I'm very pleased that we actually pulled this off of consent so that the, the committee could understand the significance of this. And thank you, Dr. Presidio, for your detailed explanation of this, and I very much support this. This gives our students considerable flexibility, which is welcome, the ability to take more CTE, or to be able to take a different sequence in science. So I think this is a welcome change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'm glad that Ms. Evans brought up the issue about the retroactive nature of this, because that was something that, at our work session, that I'm proud our Board was very sensitive to. And I want to make sure that the public understands that all students right now in, in high school, regardless of where they are in their path. And Dr. Braybrand, I certainly hope that with this action from the Board, that you and Dr. Presidio and the regional area superintendents will very, very quickly get this information to our Directors of Student Services, our principals. I, I want to draw some attention to where this benefit will also be, which is for our military students and our other families moving into the district. I recently met a Navy family whose daughter is now a junior. And when she arrived here, the pressure being put on this young lady, which so many of us know junior year is one of the toughest years for a student, and because of the diploma requirements, even at the standard level, it's tough. And so I, the, the idea that coming from maybe a, a state that has common core and we don't, and where there isn't the alignment, this is going to go a long way to helping those families. And we are really a county where we have so much influx of, of military families and, and just families that move here for the great jobs and opportunities. So I'm pleased about this. And I also want to just echo that, yes, while this is for the standard diploma, I will also raise awareness to my colleagues and to Dr. Braybrand that because we're a high-performing school district, the default, often by our amazing guidance counselors, is to guide kids towards the advanced diploma. But this also goes to, again, balance and, and finding the best fit for each individual child. And in the grand scheme of even those who are wanting to challenge themselves at the highest level, go compete for the best universities in the country, the standard diploma or the advanced diploma is not going to affect your college admissions opportunities. So having sanity for students in terms of fulfilling standard versus advanced diplomas, I also hope that will be part of our future conversations with our students and with our staff. Because while it might be optimal to move toward advanced diploma for, for high, high academic students, it is an essential. And really, being able to help them build a curriculum and taking the courses that are going to be most beneficial to their overall educational learning and preparation to go to college is something that we've got to pay attention to. And Ms. Evans, in terms of your advocacy on Avid, not only am I absolutely in agreement that we should have in a follow-up from Dr. Braybrand through a briefing, what is the simplest path to get Avid recognized as a CTE course? You know, I don't want to necessarily have to go lobby the General Assembly. I don't even know that they can legislate something like that. I thought it was done through the Virginia Board of Education. But this is what staff can direct us on. But I absolutely support your statements here tonight about Avid. And I did get a text message from one of my wonderful principals who's watching tonight, they would like Avid in their school. So I'd like to see us grow Avid to, to all of our schools.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I see Dr. Braybrand would like to provide a response.
Just a comment, you know, we certainly can go and, and figure out the right pipeline to look at the Avid question. When I was principal here in Fairfax, Avid was a great new program. It has tremendous track record of results for kids, particularly kids in the middle. And that's an area where I think we can continue to try to make sure that we're meeting every child by name and by need. And Avid has a philosophy that aligns with that and skill sets. The other thing I'd just like to say that Ms. McLaughlin pointed out is absolutely right. Colleges are looking at the transcript, not necessarily the diploma. And this gives our students and our families an opportunity. We have people come from all kinds of backgrounds who come in for four years of traditional high school, or come in in the middle, or want more flexibility to access our rich elective programming that some kids simply run out of space to take. So this is really going to be, I think frankly, the balance of those diploma options may change as families and students choose some of this additional flexibility to take some of our rich CTE offerings or fine arts offerings in a way that they perhaps have not before. So we appreciate your support for these, these changes.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And with that, I would like to repeat the motion. The motion before us is that the school board approve changing the local FCPS graduation requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma to match the VDOE requirements in Science and Social Studies for the standard diploma as recommended by a steering committee with representation from school and central office leadership. All those in favor? And that is Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Well, except we have two people away from the table. Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
You can just say who's away from the table.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I'll continue. Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenak-Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines, with Ms. Palchuk and Ms. Schultz away from the table. That motion passes. Now I call on Ms. McLaughlin to discuss the item 6.01, which has been removed from the consent agenda to be on our action agenda regarding Ms. Helen Nixon to, appointment to the ERFC Board. Ms. McLaughlin.
I move that we approve the appointment of Helen Nixon to the ERFC Board of Trustees through June 30, 2019.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. I ask that this be removed from the consent agenda, in no way reflecting Dr. Nixon's value-add to serving on the Board of Trustees. I, I did ask this become an action item because all too often, this Board, when it does its annual appointments to the ERFC Board of Trustees, it's placed on consent, we don't have a conversation about it. Half the time, the Board doesn't even know who we appointed to it. And so I just felt that this would be an optimal time, that is, we get to, you know, continue to raise the profile of Dr. Nixon joining our staff, but also being able to help the public have a, and our employees have a better understanding of what are these roles as Board of Trustees for ERFC. So I had shared with our clerk that if someone on staff who, I was not told who was going to be that person, oh, it's going to be Mr. Smith, could just speak briefly to the number of appointees that the Board brings to ERFC, and what are those duties and responsibilities?
So I'd be happy to share that information. The ERFC Board of Trustees is comprised of seven trustees. Three of those trustees are appointed by the school board. The other three are elected by the ERFC membership. And our seventh member is selected by the Board of Trustees and is generally a non-FCP, non-FCPS employee, who is also a, a content expert. And so we currently have Michael Burke, who is our non-FCPS employee. And that individual is also approved by the Board. So you appoint three individuals from staff and then approve the appointment of the non-FCPS employee. Our current- Our current staff appointees are, I am one of the trustees as the chief operating officer. Ms. Burden is one of the trustees as our chief financial officer. And we now have Dr. Nixon as a trustee representing human resources. We generally like to have a mix of human resources and finance, given the roles of benefits with human resources, and finance, given the complexity of the work that happens within the trustee boardroom. And what we do as trustees is that we're responsible for monitoring the performance of the fund, of the dollars that we have invested as part of our retirement plan. We work very closely with our investment advisors to manage those investments and make decisions on those investments. We work to allocate, do our asset allocation within the plan. And most importantly, we work to set those employer contribution rates. And you noted with Eli Martinez's report, we talked about the increase in those employer rates. But that's the work of our trustees in a nutshell. But at the end of the day, it's to ensure that we're making the best investment decisions for all of our members of the retirement fund.
So Mr. Smith, I appreciate that you had walked through the three staff that the school board appoints and approves, along with Michael Burke. What is his actual background, professional background?
It's in finance and investments.
Okay. So he has the subject matter expertise for finance and investments?
Yes, yes, he does. And then we also, again, work very closely with our investment advisors and make those decisions based on the recommendations of our investment advisors.
Okay. And then who are the other three members you mentioned that the trustees vote on themselves?
Well, and I want to make sure that I get everyone mentioned and mentioned correctly. And so as I said before, those board members are elected by the ERFC membership. We have an annual election for those board members. It's a staggered membership. Our chair is Kimberly Adams. She is elected by the ERFC membership. Darrell Richards, who is a math teacher here in our system, is the vice chairperson and trustee. And our third elected member is Kathy Hefferhan, and she is also a teacher here in the system. So it's comprised of those three teachers who are elected to the board, the three appointees here by staff, and Mr. Michael Burke, who is our subject matter expert.
And how do, how do those individuals who are elected to ERFC, how do they apply to be elected? Do they submit applications and then you all decide on who you're going to elect? I mean, how?
So there's an, there's an open election to all ERFC members, and it's an open vote. It goes out to all of our members via email. And our candidates have an opportunity to share statements via email with the membership, and then they are elected through an electronic vote by our membership.
Thank you. Because I was, I was under the impression that the trustees were doing it, but it's the actual ERFC members of which are our employees.
Yes. It's the actual ERFC members. The only member that we would make recommendations to would be the non-FCPS member who is a subject matter expert. And so we bring that name to the board every year for your approval.
Okay. And has Mr. Burke been serving for quite some time now?
Michael Burke. So I've now been on the board for, this is the beginning of my fourth year as a trustee, and he's been on during that entire time. I'm not sure how long he has been on the board, but I do know that he was very willing to be part of the board for another three-year term.
Okay. And it says, oh, it's a three-year term?
Yes, it is a three-year term.
Okay. But the appointments we do for staff, it's annual?
So the appointments now, we're in a situation where we are fulfilling terms that were vacated by previous staff members. So if you remember when Ms. Quinn left, we then had to follow behind with Dr. Ramey. When Ms. Michael left, we followed behind with Ms. Burden. And so we're just going to the end of that term, and then we will appoint for another round.
But, but again, those are annual or are they three-year terms as well?
Those are three-year terms.
Everybody's on a three-year term?
Yes. And so I'm on a three-year term, and I was just reappointed last year for the, my, my second term.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for indulging my questions. And to my colleagues, I hope you ended up finding some of this helpful information as well. And I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Smith for that very clear and complete description of what it is that we're voting on. And thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for bringing it up. Thanks.
And Dr. Braybrand, would you like to make a comment?
The only thing I would like to say is, and we've talked about it a little bit here with the board over the last several years, ERFC is a tremendous benefit to being part of the Fairfax County Public Schools family. It's tremendous, tremendous value for our employees. It's a tremendous benefit. And Mr. Martinez is working on a massive marketing strategy to better bring out the true value proposition that it is for ERFC. So we're, you'll be seeing more of our ability to work and market that program, both to our internal stakeholders, but also to let those who are applying to Fairfax County know that you're not only getting a great salary, you're getting great total compensation. And so we look forward to sharing more of that with you in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. So the motion before us is to approve the appointment of Helen Nixon to the ERFC Board of Trustees through June 30, 2019. All those in favor?
And I have Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchek, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darinak-Kofax, Mr. Wilson. That motion is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table. We now come to the consent agenda, item 6.0. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 6.01, award a contract for the Annandale High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Function Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $1,175,650, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.02, award a contract for the Bellevue Elementary School Renovation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Meridian Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $20,790,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.03, award a contract for the Chantilly High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean, Inc., in the amount of $1,070,975, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.04, award the contract for the running track replacement at Edison High School to Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $299,973, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.05, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at McNair Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Siemens Industry, Inc., in the amount of $586,180, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.06, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Navy Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Engineered Services, Inc., in the amount of $298,190, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.07, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item seven on the agenda, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, approve the Goal Four Resource Stewardship Report as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, award a contract for the Robinson Secondary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, that Ms. Keys-Gamarra at large, school board member, and school board members from Braddock and Drainsville District shall select committee appointees to the High School Language Arts Basil Instructional Materials Adoption Committee as detailed in the agenda item. Eight, superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I'll be brief tonight, but I'm really excited to share. I don't think I've shared it with you all that Keene Mill Elementary School was named a National Blue Ribbon School. And it is a National Blue Ribbon School, named so by the U.S. Department of Education. It's one of 349 schools to be named for the program this year. It was recognized for academic excellence and for closing achievement gaps among student subgroups, demonstrating that all kids can achieve in the classroom. In order to qualify for the exemplary high-performing schools designation, a school must be in the top 15% of schools in the state based on state assessments in reading and math, or a composite index including those assessment results. And I want to just commend and congratulate Renee Miller, her administrative team, the instructional staff, for achieving this prestigious recognition under Principal Miller's leadership. Keene Mill is a model for equity and excellence that reflects the hard work and commitment of an entire school community. And we want all of our schools in Fairfax County Public Schools to be blue ribbon schools. It's great that Keene Mill has gotten this honor, and we hope for many more in the years ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda is board reports, and I call on Mr. Moon for an update from the September 27 forum work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The forum discussion by the board was had a after the regular meeting, so it was late at night, close to 11 o'clock. But we had great discussion regarding a topic requested by Ms. Pat Hines from Hunter Mill District related to development of a draft charges for the school board's advisory committees. As you know, the school board has a number of advisory committees who support the work of the school board. And each year, the board gives them, gives the advisory committees charges they should be working on for the following school year. And what happens is, what usually happens is, at the end of the school year, the advisory committees present their approach to the school board. And after that is done, they need to immediately start working on, when the charges to be given by the board for the following year. But sometime in the early year, like, and the school board does not, does not always have a sufficient time to discuss about the advisory charges, the charges for the following year. So therefore, per request from the Ms. Hines, and as agreed to by the entire board, that from the next year, the advisory committees are being requested to include in their presentations for the proposed charges for the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Now I call on Ms. Evans for an update from CPDC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. CPDC is continuing to work on the direction, under the direction of the school board, on what issues we are going to focus on. We did, over the course of two meetings, come up with a fairly long list, but we are going to hone that down and bring that back to the board for consideration. We did make clear as part of our committee work that we do need to be seeing our planning and development issues under an equity lens and under the principles of One Fairfax. So that's something for us to bring back to the board soon.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans, for being a pitch hitter on the update from CPDC tonight. Now I call on board matters. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate the FCPS artist teachers in their exhibition at the Lorton Workhouse in the McGuire Woods Gallery. It is in exhibition from September 26 to October 21. Again, many of our, our teachers in the arts are also produce and performers themselves. And I would like to congratulate Molly Rumberger, who is our theater teacher at South County. She has the starring role in The Wedding Singer at Next Stop Theater. I saw her last week. She was wonderful. She is also a graduate of Westfield High School, a Cappy Award winner in the 2007-2008 season. So she was wonderful. I also want to thank Drainsville Elementary School, Lemon Road Elementary School, Herndon Middle School, and Cooper Middle School. I visited these schools in the last week. I very much appreciate the hospitality of the principals because I always want to know what does the school board need to know in order to support our students better. And I will be visiting all the schools in the Drainsville District in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans, would you like to?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to mention some, some of the school-specific events, and then one, one major event coming up on Saturday. I appreciate the conversation with the Glen Forest Elementary School community. Last week, we were discussing how to deal with the fact that there were so many of their students are in modulators outside. So we wanted to deal with the issue of capacity issues as well as traffic issues. And so we will be following up with that community very soon on, on some of their ideas. I appreciate everybody coming out for that conversation. And thank you to North Springfield Elementary School, inviting me to come to their PTA meeting last night with Regional Assistant Superintendent Dr. Zulawaga. We had a good conversation there and appreciated their hospitality. I want to thank Delegate Kay Corey for visiting two of our schools and reading to two classrooms. She's working on a project to encourage more girls and women to run for public office. So she read a story called Grace for President at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School and at Bailey's Upper. And so the students were wonderful to, to talk with and interact with there. And so lastly, I would invite everyone to come to the Taste of Annandale this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. on Tom Davis Drive in Annandale. It's a great event with lots of food and music and tables with information. And so I will see everyone there on Saturday.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I had the opportunity to speak at the Centerville Rotary Club and also attend a Title IX workshop with a few of my colleagues. It seems like a lifetime ago now, but about a week ago. And that was very informative as we were working on those issues. I also had the opportunity to attend the Chorus Festival, which is a celebration of the Korean community in the DMV area. Wonderful event, and I love the food also. And this Saturday, I will be at a Girl Scout Suicide Prevention Walk. So that's kind of what's going on. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to share with the Braddock District residents that in my newsletter today, I shared that next week I will be holding monthly office hours at the Kings Park Library. It will be next Tuesday in the morning from 9:30 to 11:00, and then Wednesday evening from 7:30 until 9:00 p.m. And the evening one will be held in actually Super And the evening one will be held in actually Supervisor Cook's Braddock Hall. I hope people will use that as an opportunity to come out and share with me the thoughts and issues that are on your mind. I also want to, again, compliment Keene Mill Elementary for the recognition as a blue ribbon school, as Dr. Braybrand shared this evening. Ms. Schultz and I have about 50 percent of the students each attending out of our Magistral District, so we're very proud of Principal Miller and her staff, and it's a very exciting recognition for that community. And then I also want to, again, express my pride and excitement for the Braddock District Schools, Frost Middle School, and Robinson Secondary for being recognized this evening for their work with the United Champion Schools' recognition. That truly is an example of how we teach our young people of what it means to truly engage with all students and create a warm and inclusive environment for all students. So it's great to see our schools doing that type of work. And otherwise, looking forward to preparing for Monday's work session.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank Ms. Karen Keys-Gamarra for joining me at the Chorus Festival on Saturday, and also happy to see where did Mr. McElveen go. Mr. McElveen is well, with the entire family. Thank you. Thanks for coming. A few days ago, there was a delegation from one of the provinces in Korea doing a school visit in Fairfax County, and I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Braybrand, meeting with, you know, visiting delegation. There were about 30 educators, including the superintendent, and answering their questions. And also, at that meeting, we had a couple of officials from the Korean Embassy with a fat check, grand check, their annual grand check to us. It was close to $100,000. So over the years, the Korean government has given us close to $700,000. And I'm hoping that we can invite, hopefully, the ambassador of our Republic of Korea to join us sometime so that we can formally thank them. This is something, and I hope that we can accomplish, because generally ambassadors don't come to our school board meetings, but I'm hoping that I can somehow convince him to come to our meetings.
Mr. Moon, we would be very honored to have the ambassador join us, I'm sure. Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Thank you. And I also want to congratulate all of those who were part of the Mental Health and Wellness Conference in putting it together. As always, they were excellent sessions, and I stayed around for a few and as well listened to the keynoter. The keynoter was Amy Presworsky, Dr. Amy Presworsky, and she talked about how to channel stress and make it your advantage, and that stress can be good. So I encourage my colleagues who didn't attend to listen to that because I think it would benefit all of us. I might go back and listen to it again. I attended a PTA meeting at West Potomac with my colleague Karen Corbett Sanders, and I want to thank Jeff Plattenberg and Tom Vacarello for answering the community's questions about facilities and safety. We really appreciate you being there. Last week, I was approached by a team of physicians, and I provided a free showing of the movie Screenagers, which explores the potential problems of prolonged screen usage via our phones, social media, or gaming. And it also, the movie itself also offered potential solution. There was a great turnout. Thank you Edison High School for hosting it, Principal Brumfield for your assistance. The two physicians who reached out were Dr. Evie Caseros and Dr. Chung. They saw these issues within their community, and they thought this movie could reach a broader audience because they are consistently being asked by their patients, what can I do to help my child deal with this almost addiction that they have with their screens? Mr. Moon joined me, so thank you so much for being there, and I do want to thank my executive assistant, Ms. Angela Petro, for putting together the many, many logistical items that had to get into place to make this happen. It was a movie that was shown at TJ tonight during this meeting time, and I think the physicians are going to reach out to other schools and communities. So if any board members are interested in hosting that, I can give you the names of these doctors, and I'm sure they'll be happy to host it at one of your schools. Yesterday morning, I had a great time at Hayfield Secondary's Senior Breakfast. We were asked to come there to talk about the importance of registering to vote and talk to students about their post-graduation plans. I also enjoyed being Mr. McElveen's photographer at that event. Thank you to, also to all Lee District PTA Presidents or their representatives who came out last night to my meeting. I asked Dr. Francisco Duran to give us an update on the new equity initiatives that we have just begun, and Dr. Duran gave an excellent presentation. He's not here, but thank you, Francisco, for doing that. It was greeted with much success anticipation. They can't wait to get started and work with their principals and start spreading the word about our equity initiatives. And finally, I just wanted to share that my family, if you noticed, some of my colleagues, I am no longer, with my last child graduating, I am no longer in need of my minivan. So what I did is I donated it to our Foundation for Applied Technologies Education, the Foundation for Applied Technical Education's Student Auto Program. And for those of you who aren't familiar with this, this program provides hands-on experience for students to refurbish used cars that have been donated by community members, and then they can go and resell it. So it is a great opportunity. It gets kids involved from the beginning. They can refurbish the car. There's another team that sells the car, and it's really a win-win for you. If you are a community member, you get the blue book value of your car the day you donate it, and it's a wonderful opportunity for the kids. So this is my second minivan that I've donated there, and if you have an old clunker like mine with over 150,000 miles on it, I encourage you to do it, and they were really appreciative. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Mr. McElveen.
I think we have a competition going for the number of clunkers between Mr. Moon and Ms. Darnak Kofax. You both have two, right? Wow, very impressive. Pass.
Ms. Palchuk.
Yes, thank you. And I got my dad to donate his clunker a few years ago, so I'm with you. I've been starting school visits again this year and been very busy with those, and very excited to join Dr. Braybrand at Mantua, my old elementary school, last week to do our yoga and mindfulness and movements, and to see everything that's happening in the school, although it is one of my many schools that is having capacity issues. So I hope we do continue to look at that as a system. I also had a chance to go to the Graham Road PTA Fall Festival on Friday night. It was packed house, perfect weather, and the whole school and the community were really enjoying that evening. Last night, we had a, I think it was last night or two nights ago, a meeting with the Shreve Wood PTA, another school that is looking to encourage kids to walk to school, and this really will take a collaboration. We had VDOT Supervisor Smith, the Parks and Trails representatives, because it is, as many people don't realize, in Virginia, the county does not own our county roads. Our roads are mostly owned by VDOT, and so it really is a partnership. And also, it was really fun on Monday. I got to go visit teachers on their teacher workday at Linear Middle School with their new principal, and they had Ed Camp, and they even had smores, no fires, don't worry, to go along with their camp. So it was really neat. I was a little sad I wasn't going to see kids, but it was really exciting to see teachers learning and working collaboratively. Ms. Darnak Kofax, actually, it's very exciting that the film Screenagers is screening on October 17th at Gate House is the next membership meeting for the FCC PTA, and the current president, Ms. Miscavige, had screened it back at Thoreau Middle School when she was PTA president to a full cafeteria. So I know Dr. Braybrand will be there October 17th, and they will be screening the film as well as, if you contact the FCC PTA, they have the special licensing fee and can work with any PTA to screen Screenagers. So that's a great event. And in addition, on October 20th at TJ, the FCC PTA is hosting a Family and Community Engagement Conference all day. So two really, I think, important events to bring out to PTAs. Last night, I joined the Foster Church High School Pyramid PTA Meeting. I know Ms. Evans was not able to join us. It was a wonderful meeting, and I hope they do more of this, and really bringing together every level, especially because at middle school, since it's just two years, it's such a challenge to recruit and maintain parents. So hopefully, we can start to build them and recruit them at the elementary school level and bring them into the middle school. So I want to thank the Foster Church PTA principals. They were all present. They had three students speak from Luther Jackson, and it was just a great evening to see such a wonderful turnout. And then finally, on Tuesday, I was able to go down to Richmond with Principal Jackson Muir for the first meeting of the state's SOL Innovation Committee meeting. It was mostly an introductory meeting. We will be unfortunately not focused on what was done in the past of trying to reduce and change some of our SOL structure this year, but we will be looking at how to help innovate and ensure deeper learning, which we do so much of it here in Fairfax, but to figure out how to improve that across the state. So I do want to thank everyone for our wonderful meeting tonight. I think we had some good conversations, and I look forward to our work session Monday will be just as efficient, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and you're welcome, Ms. Palchuk, for this wonderful meeting tonight. And I agree, I think that our speed tonight reflects a great economy on our part, and I do appreciate that, Madam Chair, to keep the pace moving. I would like to echo Ms. Darnak Kofax's comments about Screenagers. I saw it actually at Gate House a couple of years ago, and it is quite good, and I would make the observation that at this dais, the screens outnumber the people by two or three times. So if you haven't seen it, please, please go see it, and I think, you know, it is, it really is insightful in terms of what those screens do to you and your, in your brain as you're watching them. So, and as a parent, for, it has, it is an amazing thing to watch the kids and how dependent they seem to get on the screens themselves. I also wanted to thank Ms. Darnak Kofax for the clunkers reference. I have two in my driveway, and you've given me a good idea for one of them that is currently in need of some repairs, a 2,000 sedan. So thank you for that idea. I will consider it whether I've been clunking and rounding them enough. Finally, I just wanted to, well, first, I wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Copeland at Westfield High School. A parent reached out to me to let me know a really bright glow for the treatment and the response of the school to her family's needs, and I think that's really a great example of the exceptional response that Fairfax County schools can give to families when issues are brought to their attention. And so just a shout out to him. And finally, I just wanted to commend the folks that came out tonight to talk about the special needs issues that were raised by two of the citizens that spoke. Really great points, and I look forward to following up with them because I think those are issues that we probably could do a little better on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Heinz.
Yes, thanks. Just a couple of things. It was a great honor to participate last Friday evening in a dedication ceremony at Madison High School of a new field house for Lenny Schultz, who was a beloved teacher and coach who passed away tragically and suddenly a couple of years ago. So it was just a lovely coming together of community members. They built a little field house right next to the football field and the snack building, and it's a space that apparently Coach Schultz thought they needed the whole time that he was coaching. And the football team was there. It was also the night that they played Westfield and almost beat them. So it was a good game. It was senior night as well, so I got to participate in that. I've never stood out there and greeted the seniors as they come on, as they come down the track. I want to thank Principal Hood and all the staff at Madison for putting together a beautiful ceremony and for including me. I want to thank my colleagues, Mr. McElveen and Ms. Keys-Gamarra for being there as well, the mayor of Vienna, Lori Duraco, was there, and our delegate, Mark Keem, as well. So it was a nice ceremony. And finally, I am looking forward to a visit at my school that I teach at in Arlington, Key Elementary Spanish Immersion School, by Dr. Zuluaga, Assistant Superintendent here, and my colleague, Dahlia Palchuk, and some other leaders from this school system to come and see the Key School Spanish Immersion Model, which actually has been around for almost 25 years, and really does a remarkable job. I think I'm very fortunate to work there, and I look forward to your visit.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Now I will take a few moments myself. I want to encourage everybody that next week, December 15th, or October 15th, is the last day you can register to vote for the upcoming election. So I encourage you to register if you're not registered. Encourage your students to register if they will be 18 on November 6th, and encourage your students to ask for an absentee ballot if they are away at school. Also, next week is Digital Citizenship Week, and a number of our schools will be promoting positive behaviors in digital citizenship, and so that is particularly important in light of the Screenagers discussion from tonight. And I would encourage everybody to embrace some of those citizenship skills if you aren't using them already. Next Friday, we will have a ribbon cutting for the first community school in Fairfax County, Walt Whitman, and that will happen Friday, the 19th. And I know that Dr. Braybrand and Ms. Darnak Kofax and others will be there, so it's a wonderful opportunity to recognize all of the hard work of the SKEPT Committee that has been advancing the community and schools model for several years, and so I'm very excited about that. Also want to thank the West Potomac community for hosting, Ms. Darnak Kofax and myself, in the very important discussion about capacity at that school. And also, the Mount Vernon Substation Leadership, as they are about to launch for the second year the PALS Program, which is Police at Lunch for Fort Hunt and Riverside Elementary Schools, where officers in the community go and spend time with our students at those two schools. So it's very exciting, and we really appreciate their commitment. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.